Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, I also need a motion to authorize the three drafts in front of us, which is 2019-49, 2019-50, and 2019-51. Is there a motion to that?
So.
Back to the room, you got it, Don?
Yes.
And who? Second by, maybe you ought to abstain, Mike.
Oh, maybe I should do this.
I'll second.
Second by Roger. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, okay. Would the court please redraft number 2019-49 in title only?
A joint resolution of the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township and the Council of the City of Kent, Ohio pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 759.34, determining that the rate of taxes to be levied upon all the taxable property of said municipality and said township for cemetery purposes for the tax year of 2019 shall be and hereby is fixed in an amount equal to .500 mils for the City of Kent and .500 mils for Franklin Township and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension. Second. Please call the row on suspension.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Jack. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Anybody? Please call the row on adoption.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Joint Resolution 2019-49 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the court redraft number 2019-50 in title only with the amendment with Mike's name in it?
Uh huh. 2019-50, a joint resolution appointing Mike DeLeon, a member of Kent City Council, to the Standing Rock Cemetery Board of Trustees in accordance with the provisions of the Ohio Revised Code Section 759.36, effective January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2022, and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Roger. Please call the row on suspension.
Mr. DeLeon?
Abstain.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Heidi. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the row for adoption.
Mr. DeLeon?
Abstain.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Joint Resolution 2019-50 passes.
Okay, thank you. Would the court redraft number 2019-51 in title only?
2019-51, a joint resolution granting salary and hourly pay raises to the personnel of the Standing Rock Cemetery and declaring an emergency.
Move suspension.
Second.
Second by Jack. Please call the row on suspension.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Move adoption.
Second.
Second by Roger. Is there any discussion on adopting this ordinance? Seeing none, please call the row for adoption.
Mr. Farrar?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhar?
Yes.
Ms. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Sedoti?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Hannah?
Yes.
Mr. Benjamin?
Yes.
Mr. Swan?
Yes.
Mr. Amrin?
Yes.
Mr. DeLeon?
Yes.
Joint Resolution 2019-51 passes.
Okay, thank you. That's.
Can I say something?
Comment?
Yeah, on the first ordinance, it was Garrett that seconded the motion, not Mr. Sedoti. Okay, thank you.
All right, that's fine. Okay, that's it all on the agenda for the joint meeting. Is there anything the trustees would like to bestow on us? That's good. If there's no other business, I'm going to adjourn. Thank you for your time. It's a pleasure. The Indians are on, all right, pretty soon. You can stay and bear through this with us if you want. All right, we're going to move into the committee of the whole. Dr. Warren, the president, outgoing president of the university, was supposed to be here and she is ill and can't make the meeting tonight, so we'll deal with that later. Finance Committee, Mr. DeLeon?
Yes, I'd like to, where are we at here? Law Director, prosecution pay revision?
Yeah, it's actually not a typo. Hope is asking to take compensation opportunity away from her own self, so I know who does that, right? It's really a vestige of the former arrangement with the former law director. And as you recall, we kind of changed some things and really affirmed up the full-timeness of the current law director, and that's been great for us. And as part of that, the old law director had an opportunity to collect prosecutor duty pay when he did prosecutions. Hope's saying that's okay, she doesn't need that. So, I mean, I don't want to steal your thunder, but that's pretty much it, right?
That's it. We just want to amend the ordinance so that neither myself or any future law director can get compensation for that. The charter indicates that the law director shall represent the city in all legal proceedings. That includes prosecutions, and I just think it's unnecessary to pay your law director extra for something that they should, that the law director pay should have been compensated, compensating them for anyway.
I agree.
Thank you.
Questions?
I just, my question is just to thank you. I guess it's not really a question, but I'm not going to lie, I read it twice. And I was like, okay, all right. Thank you for pointing that out.
Anybody from the audience have anything to say about that? Back to council? Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can say thank you. Thank you, thank you, Hope.
So, Mr. Coffey is way out of order tonight.
I know.
He's at the top of the batting order.
He won't know what to do with himself after he gets done here.
We're just doing it for you so you stay another two years.
No leverage there.
Good evening.
It's going to take too long.
I'll try not to. I am requesting committee authorization, finance committee authorization tonight of the budget amendments, as I've outlined in my E424, I'm granting them to the city manager. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Anyone from the audience have any questions? Back to council? Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That's the best you ever got out of here.
Yeah.
All right, that does. Community development, Mr. Kuhar? Glenn's going to start this one.
All right.
Yes, so first thing we've got is the proposed permit and overnight parking changes.
Yeah, this has kind of been in the works for some time and really can go all the way back to sort of the comprehensive parking plan that really was put together back when we sort of embarked on the downtown redevelopment. This is probably one of the final pieces and mainly has to do with some of the permit situations and changing those and certain areas for overnight parking, so Bridgette.
Yes, as you remember, we were before you in September of 2018 to eliminate the day permits that were used for the Columbus Street lot and some of the designated spaces on the north side of town. Those changes have been implemented and have worked well. The final permitting variable we had to deal with was the overnight parking. That area was designated back in 2007. It was the eight spots that were basically really in city right-of-way but seemed to be as part of a private setback next to 257 North Water. That project was designated for redevelopment initiative, so we knew we would have to be addressing the overnight permit situation. So, with the coordinating off of that area, we did issue temporary C permits. C permits are what we have in our code to allow for the overnight parking permit, and those are in effect for the two residents that were able to verify they had C permits prior. Now, that only gets us through June 30th, so we are here before you. We actually took this matter before the Parking Action Committee back in August of last year, and I will work through each of the variables here. These are the PAC's recommendations. Staff has some additional comments we'd like to add to each of them. Their first was that the designation of the overnight resident parking permits valid from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., excluding on Sundays. After some dialogue with the two residents that actually had existing C permits and others in the community, we would ask council to consider making that perhaps 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. The two-hour parking basically is in effect throughout that whole area, but we do have it, you know, for the businesses during the day. Usually you see that through 8:00 to 6:00. So, 8:00 p.m. would allow some clearing out and would, should accommodate the residents. The overnight resident parking permits need to be issued to downtown residents only. I did have two applicants come in seeking those C permits. They were unable to provide me documentation that they actually had a C permit prior or that they resided downtown. As you know, we do have the Parta deck. The city has actually been part of that funding mechanism in the deck, so we don't want to create a situation where we're competing. But we do recognize that there are residents on North Water who have been serviced by these overnight permits, and it is a bit of a walk from the deck. One of the residents actually works second shift, so we do think there can be an on-street accommodation for that, but we would ask that that be in a limited amount. The PAC also recommended that we continue charging a fee. Right now, the fee for those permits, overnight permits, is $15. That was established in 2007. While we did not come up with a set amount, we definitely think between 25 and 40 per month is reasonable. Just for comparative purposes, the overnight parking permits in Parta, for example, for the non-covered, which would be the rooftop, is $77.84. For those that seek covered parking for the overnight parking in the deck, they pay $98.84 per month. So, a range of $35 to $40 a month would be half of what the uncovered is at Parta. We also would request that we specify that the payment guarantees a specific spot. We will designate with signage where they are allowed to park for the resident parking only, but we are not guaranteeing spots. That question came up where, you know, will I get the third spot on the west side? We'll designate an area. That's the way the C permits are structured now in the current ordinance, and we would support that continued policy. And then we're asking that we designate no more than 10 spots. When this was presented to the Parking Action Committee, it was discussed putting them on the east side, as you saw in the map, but as I indicated in the memo, staff is also recommending consideration of perhaps 10 spots on the east side. So, you have two options. We are not asking for both areas to be designated. To be clear, that would be 20 spots, and we do not need that. We would ask that on North Water, you know, we can discuss it if you have questions, we select either those 10 indicated on the map on the west side or the 10 indicated as another option on the east side of North Water. Now, in addition to this, we did bring up to the Parking Action Committee, while we'll put it out there for discussion, you can include it in a recommendation tonight, although we would not operationalize it, we are going to have residential needs on the south side of town. Once Hisawee's is built, there'll be 16 market-rate apartments there. The developer is going into an agreement with Parta to provide those spots, but there may be situations where an overnight guest might need a permit or a secondary parker in one of those units. In addition, the West End project, while it has been delayed, that project is anticipated to move forward. I just had a discussion with Randy not too long ago, and he is looking for other avenues to make that project go forward, and that will be residential. So, at the time that those go into effect, we anticipate, even though there is parking available options for both of those, that there may be a need on the south side. It is fine if that recommendation is not included in the ordinance tonight, but I did want to put it out there for discussion purposes, and if we did indicate it, we would not put that into effect until if a need ever arrives. I can at this point take questions because these are Parking Action Committee recommendations.
Look at the chairman.
Tracy.
So, with the parking permits that are allowed from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., is that weekdays?
That basically would be every day except Sunday. So, Sunday, we would, they would still be able to park there on Sunday, but we wouldn't ticket if a non-resident was parked in there at 9:00, for example.
The parking permit for the residents is good all day long?
No, it is good from 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., and then they revert to the two-hour parking during the daytime hours.
Well, so what if a person is sick and they have to stay home? What do they do with their car then?
That would be a challenge. They would have to basically, we didn't really make allowances for that because the on-street parking is two-hour parking. This is to accommodate just the overnight.
So, that's it?
Yes, they could appeal. If they are ticketed, they could appeal it.
Okay, all right, and so then it's, you said.
It's not a 24/7 pass, I guess.
Okay.
Any more questions, Tracy?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, Heidi?
I have to say I'm a little bit confused, and I would have liked to have some visual.
There is a map. Yeah, there's the map in the memo I submitted.
Show me.
Is this it? That is south, and then this would be the two options on North Water Street.
So, okay, 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 that's good. Then I have no questions right now.
John?
Oh, I have a new question that came up. We were talking about on the south side, the overnight parking with someone having an occasional guest. Now, from my understanding of the overnight parking, these are issued permits by the month. Now, how would an overnight guest get into that?
What I'm saying is if there was a resident in Hisawee's building or in the west end, and they had maybe a teenager with a vehicle, and Hisawee's, the owner, was only providing one permit per unit, and they wanted to buy a second overnight permit, they still would have to provide proof. Or if it was a situation where they had somebody that was staying with them long-term, they still would have to show proof of residency and pay for the permit.
So, they would buy a monthly permit for their guests?
We are asking, while the cost would be identified per month, that they should be issued quarterly. It creates a great deal of staff time to process the parking permits, and we are a busy division, so at a minimum, we'd ask they be bought quarterly.
Okay, and on the second question, have we given any thought to what we're doing about the parking ordinance on any street in Kent when there's three inches of snow?
That is not a matter that's before us tonight, but I will mention it to chief. We can bring it up with the Traffic Engineering and Safety Committee.
Okay.
Any more, any more, John? John, any more? No? Okay. Roger?
Bridgette, we have eliminated this parking because of the project that's going on.
Correct.
Have we accommodated equally the people who were taken advantage?
Yes, I actually spent, I went throughout the weekend and had staff do it during the week multiple times, putting notices on every car that was parked there, letting them know this was happening. We started that two weeks before. I was putting on every windshield.
I guess my question is, is that?
We only had two that came in to get the permits.
Okay.
So, we had two residents from the North Water Street area that came in and got the permits that allow them to park on North Water Street. I spoke to Chief Lee. She wanted the permits to be, they're displayed on the dashboard notification when that's at the police department, that if they have that and this number, and they had all the background information, they were allowed to park there overnight. Two other members of the community came in, but they were not residents downtown. They had just happened to be parking there for various reasons. The other people that were parked there never came in and inquired. So, right now, we only have two valid permits from that area that are out on North Water Street now.
So, we've accommodated, let me see if I get this question, if I get this question on. We've accommodated those people who have been displaced but have been following the rules?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
So, really, all our decision is, is what side of the road do we want to put them on?
Right, once, because those permits right now are issued through June 30th. That was to give us time to, like, basically get the permits in place and a mechanism. We will then establish the permanent policy on the overnight permits based on what is decided tonight.
So, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Okay, so, the one side, I, when I look at North Water Street, the one side is a business that's on the west side, so that's not going to impact them, right?
Remember, at 8:00 a.m., it reverts back to two-hour parking. So, this is only for 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., if that timeframe is recommended by council. And then at that point, the streets revert back to the normal two-hour as it's posted now. So, it's basically to accommodate the residents that when they, when they get home and they need to park overnight. It is not to provide a place basically to store a vehicle 24/7 as you would in a private residence.
Right, right, okay, cool. Either side will work. I'm done.
Yes, Heidi?
Yeah, I see that it says that the Parking Action Committee recommends 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., and you guys are recommending 8:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m. Isn't that a kind of a hardship for somebody, getting home from work and having to park somewhere and then move their car?
Well, they'll be able, most likely, to be able to park in that area. This far down on North Water, they're usually not filled. And actually, the Parking Action Committee, we recommended that time, but we told them that staff was going to work through it and also talk to members of the community to find out what their recommendations were. So, they said, you know, 6:00, 8:00 p.m., or whatever staff recommended. We are fine with the 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m., but I do think that that transition period between that two-hour turnover and the overnight starting is probably a recommendation worth considering. Tracy?
Well, so, a resident, since it's two-hour parking then up to 8:00 p.m., couldn't they park there at 6:00 for two hours and then just their permit kicks in, correct?
Correct.
Same thing in the morning, they could park from 8:00 to 10:00 because it's two-hour parking.
Correct.
Now, what did the residents say? Did they say they were okay with this? I mean, is that working out for them? What do they do? Do they move their cars someplace else then if they have to in the morning?
We have not had any complaints with the way it's been implemented, and actually, one of the two residents that has one has a second shift position, so she is, this, she gets back late. So, for her, she's been able to find a spot. Now, right now, those C permits, the temporary ones, are allowing them to park on either side, anywhere on North Water, as long as it's displayed. But they have not called me and reported any issues or concerns. John?
Yeah, so I have to make this a question. Isn't it true that even though there are a couple businesses in that block, that, other than the bars, the bars, I believe, start filtering in after 9:00, and the other businesses, I think Stand-in-Rock has events, there's still, at that time of evening, is generally adequate parking. It doesn't start filling up till the bars.
Correct, and that's why this would allow, and as was pointed out by Tracy, there is that two-hour parking ability regardless if you have a permit or not. So, staff definitely has had a preference towards the east side, but we are open to either side, but we would like, you know, a recommendation from council on that so that we can make sure that we do our implementation and our notice in our adjustment and amendment to the section in the 3503, or 353.
Are there that many spots on the east side?
Yeah, we went out and looked, and right now, we're seeing a maximum of 10, but based on the fact that there has actually been only two legitimate C permit representatives that have come in for the temporary permits, we would probably only sign it based on how many, so I'm anticipating not signing more than four or five initially. So, we would, you know, designate that area, and then as needed, we would, we could always move the sign down a spot, but we would not exceed 10. That doesn't mean right now we're going to coordinate off 10 for every evening. I think it should be need-driven with a maximum of 10.
Yeah, we have more than that, I just wonder where they're parking.
They have literally not contacted me. I actually printed out, because there's eight spots in that area. I had the temporary C permits printed out, and I definitely, we were tracking which vehicles we were putting them on, and I was putting them on similar vehicles every evening, and staff was during the day, and we only really heard from two. And then two that were actually parking there, but were not residents downtown. Any more, John?
No, I.
Roger?
I can't make this a question, so.
Roger.
Bridgette, have you talked with Jim? We're going to be involved with that North Water Street revamping. Will we have to come back and relook at that again if we change the?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so this would be until we?
Correct, right, but we can't operate with what we have currently because those spots no longer exist.
Right.
So, we need to make an accommodation, but those adjustments will be, and by then, we also will have a handle on how many actually are needing those overnight permits.
And maybe how many, and how many additional spots we may have or?
Correct.
Less spots.
Correct.
Thank you.
John?
Now, from what I understand, Madanios are redoing the 257 North Water Street building. Are they not going, they're going to have apartments upstairs with no parking, correct?
No, it is going to be a commercial venture only. The original, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. The original version that came in two plans ago did include a residential component. It became a little cost prohibitive because of the fire suppression needed to accommodate a residential over a commercial. So, they're right now building what we call in our department a vanilla box. They're doing a commercial, they have no tenant identified, but it will basically be set up with rough-ins to accommodate a food establishment or some other type of commercial venture.
Okay.
Those people who have been displaced but have been following the rules.
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
So really, all our decision is, is what side of the road do we want to put them on?
Right. Once, because those permits right now are issued through June 30th. That was to give us time to like basically get the permits in place and a mechanism. We will then establish the permanent policy on the overnight permits based on what is decided tonight.
So, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Okay. So, the one side, I, when I look at North Water Street, the one side is a business. It, that's on the west side, so that's not going to impact them.
Remember, at 8:00 AM, it reverts back to two-hour parking. So, this is only for 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM if, if that timeframe is recommended by council. And then at that point, the streets revert back to the normal two-hour as it's posted now. So, it's basically to accommodate the residents that when they, when they get home and they need to park overnight. It is not to provide a place basically to store a vehicle 24/7 as you would in a private residence.
Right. Okay, cool. Either side will work.
Yes, Heidi.
Yeah, I see that it says that the Parking Action Committee recommends 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And you guys are recommending 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. Isn't that a kind of a hardship for somebody getting home from work and having to park somewhere and then move their car?
Well, they'll be able, most likely to be able to park in that area. This far down on North Water, they're usually not filled. And actually, the Parking Action Committee, we recommended that time, but we told them that staff was going to work through it and also talk to members of the community to find out what their recommendations were. So, they said, you know, 6:00, 8:00 or whatever staff recommended. We are fine with the 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, but I do think that that transition period between that two-hour turnover and the overnight starting is, is probably a recommendation worth considering.
Tracy?
Well, so a resident, since it's two-hour parking then up to 8:00 PM, couldn't they park there at 6:00 for two hours and then just their permit kicks in, correct?
Correct.
Same thing in the morning, they could park from 8:00 to 10:00 because it's two-hour parking.
Correct.
Now, what did the residents say? Did they say they were okay with this? I mean, is that working out for them? What do they do? Do they move their cars someplace else then if they have to in the morning?
Uh, we have not had any complaints with the way it's been implemented. And actually, one of the two residents that has one has a second shift position. So, she is, this, she gets back late. So, for her, she's been able to find a spot. Now, right now, those seat permits, the temporary ones, are allowing them to park on either side, anywhere on North Water, as long as it's displayed. But they have not called me and reported any issues or concerns.
John?
Yeah, um, so I have to make this a question. Isn't it true that even though there are a couple businesses in that block, that, other than the bars, that the bars, I believe, start filtering in after 9:00? And the other businesses, I think Stand and Rock has events, they're still, at that time of evening, is generally adequate parking. It doesn't start filling up till the bars.
Correct. And that's why this would allow, and as, as was pointed out by Tracy, there is that two-hour parking ability regardless if you have a permit or not. So, staff definitely has, had a preference towards the, the, the east side, but we are open to either, either side. But we would like, you know, a recommendation from council on that so that we can make sure that we do our implementation and our notice in our, our adjustment and amendment to the section in the 3503, or 353.
Are there that many spots on the east side?
Um, yeah, we would, we went out and looked. And the, right now, we're saying a maximum of 10. But based on the fact that there has actually been only two legitimate seat permit representatives that have come in for the temporary permits, we would probably only sign it based on how many. I'm anticipating not selling more than four or five initially. So, we would, you know, designate that area. And then as needed, we would, we could always move the sign down a spot, but we would not exceed 10. That doesn't mean right now we're going to cordon off 10 for, for every evening. I think it should be need-driven with a maximum of 10.
Yeah, we have more than that. I just wonder where they're parking.
They have literally not contacted me. I actually printed out, because there's eight spots in that area. I had the temporary seat permits printed out. And I definitely, we were tracking which vehicles, we were putting them on. And I was putting them on similar vehicles every evening and staff was during the day. And we only really heard from two. And then two that were actually parking there, but were not residents downtown.
Any more, John?
No, I, um...
Roger?
I can't make this a question, so.
Roger.
Bridgette, have you talked with Jim? We're going to be involved with that North Water Street revamping. Will we have to come back and relook at that again if we change the?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So, this would be until we?
Correct, right. But we can't operate with what we have can, can currently because those spots no longer exist.
Right.
So, we need to make an accommodation. But those adjustments will be, and by then, we also will have a handle on how many actually are needing those overnight permits.
And maybe how many, and how many additional spots we may have or?
Correct.
Less spots.
Correct.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, um, now, from what I understand, Madanios are redoing the 257 North Water Street building. Are they not going to, they're, they're going to have apartments upstairs with no parking, correct?
No, it is going to be a commercial venture only. The origin, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. The original version that came in two plans ago did include a residential component. It became a little cost prohibitive because of the fire suppression needed to accommodate a residential over a commercial. So, they're right now building what we call in our department a vanilla box. They're doing a commercial, they have no tenant identified. But it will basically be set up with rough-ins to accommodate a food establishment or some other type of commercial venture.
Oh, okay.
Tracy?
So, you were saying that staff wanted to switch the 6:00 PM start time to 8:00 PM start time because of the business. But since there's only two people that have the seat permit, it's not really impinging that much on businesses. So, if they, if it stayed 6:00 to 8:00, it wouldn't really be that much of a problem then.
The 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM, though, anticipates that there may be a greater demand for these once they are made available to the public. So, while right now it works for the two, it would seem to make sense that with the two-hour parking parameter to go with that 8:00 PM to 8:00 AM. But if staff prefers to keep it at 6:00 PM to 8:00 AM, we will, we will, you know, put that in effect.
Should we split the difference and just make it seven to eight?
We could.
Any more questions from council? Oh, yes, Heidi.
So, what you need from us is to determine what the fee should be. That you determine which side of the road with a recommendation of the west side by the Parking Action Committee, which might be, currently, maybe there's more business needs on the east side. It's hard to know without knowing the whole population of residents, what the best picture would be for this. And also, what would be the timeframe? So, that would be in a motion.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, I guess that's, that's, those are my ans, my, my questions right now.
Okay. Any more questions from council? Okay, questions from the audience? Okay, back to council.
I'd like to make a motion.
Are you, is this, is this in support of, is this? Pardon me, but?
I think you need to recuse yourself.
Yeah, is this in support of your businesses or residents in that area?
Uh, I own, I owned a building, yeah.
I don't think you can make the motion then.
Is that a conflict?
What kind of, what, what kind of business is it?
I have a mixed use.
There's residential, so two of the temporary permit holders are issued to tenants in the building.
I don't think it's a conflict. I don't think it's a conflict.
Okay, anyhow, here's my motion. I would make a motion that the west side of the street put a $35 a month fee. And what was the third?
Easter, uh, west, east or west, or what the timeframe is.
And, I don't know, I think eight to eight's fine. That's my motion.
I'll second that, just to get a conversation.
Comments?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Yeah, I mean, that seems to be a compromise for everyone. I mean, no one's going to have a perfect situation. People are going to be sick, people are going to have things. But, you know, you can't, you know, fluctuate, accommodate everybody for everything. And I think that, that takes care of the basic needs. And if a person has to get up and move their car because they work late, they have to get up and move their car. And, um, and I think with the, the eight to eight, it takes care of the, the bar crowd because that way they're not parking somewhere and then all of a sudden they're in violation because most of the pe, most of them, not all, most of the people come in, nine, nine o'clock, they start filtering downtown. So, you know, that situation is already handled with an eight to eight. And I just, it makes a lot of sense.
Okay, Roger?
No, I just think we, we're, we're making an accommodation for those people who have, have these in the past. And it's just reasonable. It's a reasonable accommodation. We just moved the spot and I think it's, I think it's appropriate that, uh, you know, $35 seems fair to me per month. And I would also say that, um, I think the extra two hours that they have on either end really makes, whether it's eight to eight, six to eight, 10 to eight, it doesn't matter. They get two hours of parking anyway on both ends. So, I'm good with, with that, with the motion.
Yeah, could, I'd, I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. I would just like to give them an extra hour and make it seven to eight unless, I think, I think that would be nice.
Second?
Yeah, I just think some, some, I mean, they are living there. We need to accommodate them a little bit. So, seven would give them if they come back from work early at 5:00 o'clock. I don't think there's going to be too much of an overlap between the businesses and the residents if there's not that many residents.
Yeah, I agree with that because many people do get off in the 5:00 o'clock timeframe. And we're not just talking about these two. I think many, I think more will come forward. And we're kind of trying to set a template for the rest of, of downtown to some degree. So, that would be, I think that would be pretty reasonable.
Yes, John?
Yeah, I'll, I'll support that too. I, I don't think it makes a whole lot of difference either way. But I know that several of the people are walking from Lake Street. But they're probably happy, I mean, unless they just don't want to buy a permit and, or not.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the?
Amendment.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Now, the motion is amended.
So, on the amended motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Don't go far, yeah.
John, you going to say the other one or what?
No, you got to go ahead.
Okay, all right. All right, next up is the Revised Neighborhood Grant Program.
So, this, you know, we still love the concept of, of enriching neighborhoods, promoting neighborhoods, helping neighborhood identity, neighborhood pride. We all ask good, we still really want to promote that. We didn't get the reaction, the application, frankly, many applications for projects for neighborhoods like we hoped. Remember, we, our original program was kind of something that's good for the neighborhood in a, in the bigger context. So, Bridgette and Dan have decided to propose tonight, maybe they're still trying to promote neighborhoods, but almost on a house-by-house basis. So, letting people apply for a certain amount of funding to be used to upgrade the exterior of their properties within very defined limits. Again, the theory would be to help get things started in a neighborhood because what we typically find is one property kind of starts to invest in itself, others soon follow. So, the idea here is kind of seed that a little bit and promote that in a different way. So, less of the, you know, a new neighborhood sign, which was what we originally hoped for, things like that with flowers and plantings on the front of the neighborhood. Since we didn't get as many of those, this is sort of plan B. And we, again, we still think it has merit and we're still just trying to do what we can to promote neighborhoods, so.
Yes, as Dave mentioned, the Neighborhood Grant Program was established back, actually, part is the Neighborhood Enhancement Program back, dating back to Gary. We implemented this with funding in 2014. We commit $15,000 a year. And as a reminder, it was a carve-out out of the social service funding. Right now, we are averaging about $8,000 actually per year that is committed out to projects. Only in 2017 did we actually commit the whole 15,000. And a large percentage of that was actually a demolition project that I had been working on and Dan joined in for over six years. 336 Silver Meadows, we had a vacant and abandoned home that through many, many issues with legal ramifications, we were finally able to take it down. We had been working with the neighbors because it was a extremely blighted property. And we were able to get the buy-in from the neighborhood to commit the funds for that demolition so that, that nuisance property was removed. But that was the only year that we expended the entire. Just to give you an understanding, there were two tracks for the program. There was the neighborhood engagement, which speaks to the efforts to try to organize residents to do things that would, were collaborative in nature, often community block parties. Those were capped at 2,000. We did nine grants for that. We really only did three block, community block parties, and they were all in the same community, done by the same organizer. We also helped with an edible Kent at the farmer's market, which was extremely difficult to get buy-in because that was actually in a commercial area. So, we had to go pretty wide to get that 70% buy-in. And then we also had a community garden that was done at Walls Elementary, which also took significant commitment of staff time to work with the volunteers to get that, that buy-in. The Neighborhood Enhancement Program, which is what the one we call the Bricks and Mortar, which gave a grant maximum of 5,000 per project, we actually only had four grants come out of that. And three of them went to homeowners associations. Two of them were to the same homeowners association. And while they were great projects and they definitely helped improve the gateway, it was actually, didn't get the buy-in we wanted for some of our more established, older residential neighborhoods. So, while we think that the additions in those areas were beneficial, we were getting the same homeowners associations coming to seek assistance through that program and not getting the other neighborhoods. So, the change we're proposing is to make it more of a residential exterior enhancement grant. We right now, for the example, for over 14-month period, we issued 450 property maintenance violations. Of those, 379 were resolved in about a 13-month period. We have 69 that are active. These are projects that because the homeowner is ill or of limited financial means, has not been able to correct them all in an expeditious manner. But they are definitely making efforts to move forward. Of that, we have about 30 that just can't go any further because they are households that tend to be low-income and they do not have the means to correct the gutter, the roof, the window, or whatever the situation is. We often try to work with them, but the, the rehabilitation program that the city's Community Development Department manages is for large substantive rehabilitation projects. So, the way it is structured with the funding from the state and HUD is that we can't just fix one thing. So, you might have your gutters down or your chimney falling down. But when we step on property, we have to look at everything from basement up and the entire outside. So, it results in a deferred loan, which converts to a grant at some point. But that is very scary for some homeowners. And we, and we have found that they are reluctant to go that far down the path. So, Dan and I, also working with Eric Helmster and Paul Bauer, our code enforcement officers, have talked about if we could just have a program where based on need, we could provide the assistance to correct that code violation, it would really address some of those ones that we have not been able to close out. We would request that this be based on income eligibility, using those same HUD income requirements that we use for our rehabilitation program. The rates actually just came out yesterday. For a family of four, for example, they, the 80% of the area median income cap sit at $57,850 for a family of four. And the scale then adjusts based on the number of persons in the household. I can tell you that many of the residents that we find to have limited means tend to be elderly. And they are on fixed incomes with really no means to increase their income. So, this was a way that we thought we could work with them. We also recognize that we want to structure it as a reimbursement program with documentation and proof of payment. But we recognize that many homeowners may not understand how to do that. So, staff is willing to step in and guide them with getting some of the pricing. And we could, in some situations where there was absolutely no way to afford it in the front end, that the city could manage that process for them. We recognize this is different than the program we brought for you in 2014, but we do think it will make some impact in the neighborhoods. Many of you have reached out to me as well as our staff with concerns. And oftentimes, these homeowners are embarrassed. They do want to address them. And I will say this would be specific to owner occupied and, and income eligible. It is not eligible for anyone in a rental or any kind of commercial entity. I can take questions about our proposed changes?
Yes, Tracy.
So, you were saying, for example, elderly person, here it says they would pay $1,000 and then they get reimbursed by the city. And you said that if they weren't able to do that because elderly, they don't have an extra $1,000 around. So, what would you do? You would advance them $1,000 anyway, or?
We would actually ma, we would basically identify the vendor and we would, in some cases, use volunteer labor and, and pay for that and schedule to have it done. We do a senior service day. It's one of those programs that we've been doing. It's one of my favorite ones, actually. We do it with Family and Community Services and Riverside Chapel, where they go out and with volunteers, they do activities for seniors and those in need on one weekend. Right now, it's actually just on one day. And we do a lot, we actually do front a lot of those ahead of time and manage that process. So, we would be more than happy to be able to do that. We're talking very small projects, perhaps maybe removal of overgrown brush that they can't afford to have a landscape company in. The gutters are clogged, causing spillover. We have one where there is a roof issue. It would cost more than $1,000, but we probably could at least get it patched so that at least it would be safe and decent housing and protect the area. So, we would, on a case-by-case basis, ask for that latitude to manage in-house when we needed to. And there are situations where there are, you know, families that do have teenagers that could go out and do some of this work. And we would basically manage all of that. We would ask for the proposal. We would want to see costs. We have a good handle on how much things run for code enforcement. So, we would be able to see if, you know, someone, for example, was being taken advantage of or if we think that we could provide a reference to someone that could do it at a, a better price.
And then if somebody's interested in this program, they would contact you?
Actually, we want to limit it not to open to all residents that have an issue. I actually already had three residents call me that had received word of this. We would like it specifically limited to those that have an outstanding property maintenance violation on an exterior property. Because those are the situations we have now as an open case. And our process is if you don't address it, we start accruing fines. And then those fines are certified over to the property. So, we would, we are limiting this only to those that have active and ongoing code enforcement violations. Or property maintenance violations.
So, then you would, you would address them once they've been cited?
Right. Paul and Eric, our code enforcement officers, work with all of these residents. And they have a pretty good handle on those that could benefit from this program and those that really don't need it necessarily. So, we would use them to basically be our gatekeeper. They would triage, they would make the reference to the program. Dan and I would work with them to help fill out the applications and get those little pieces together that they may need. But we are specifically not opening it up to anyone that wants to do something, only those that are outstanding code violations.
John?
Oh, I know with the Neighborhood Enhancement Program, could it have been better promoted? Or maybe the promotion needs to look less governmental to attract people's attention?
We actually had it in the Tree City Bulletin, we had it on the website. We've advertised, we, we actually have put it out in flyers. What it is, is that buy-in, they have to get 70% buy-in. They designate the neighborhood. We don't designate it for them. So, we explained it could be a street, it could be a large block area. Oftentimes, though, going around and getting those signatures just wasn't something that people wanted to do.
Yeah, so on your new proposal, it just somewhat seems a shame that, I, I can see having it to be income-qualified. But, you know, suppose you have a person that has got into FHA home that, you know, they don't have a lot of money, they're low-income, they would meet that. And they, they want to beautify their home, but they don't have the funds to do it. You're excluding them from, you know, trying to take care of one side of the coin with your outstanding things, which is a good thing. But I think you're excluding other people. I mean, an ugly house is an ugly house. And, you know, so maybe you get somebody that's, you know, their first house, they bought an FHA, they're, they're low-income, and they want it to look nice. I mean, I don't know.
This mirrors a project, actually, before I was here. I worked as executive director for a CBC down by the University of Akron. And we called it the Good Neighborhood Program. And we actually did the similar one. And I recognize what you, you are referencing. But there is so many outstanding property maintenance violations that those are usually the ones that are so egregious, we're getting calls. So, while there, maybe we look at how much funding goes through and how much we utilize under a pilot program for the first year running it this way. And if it turns out like, like we did, for example, with the Neighborhood Grant Program, where we allocated $15,000, but we were only spending on average of $8,000, we come back to you and say, can we expand it? Now, with that, we would have to create specific criteria, limit certain activities because obviously $15,000 won't go far community-wide. As you can see from the map that I included with my memo, though, the outstanding property maintenance violations in, for homeowners that we believe to be income-eligible is pretty widespread throughout the, the city. So, we're not, we're not advert, or objecting that. But I would say we have, we have over 30 to 40 people that we think can benefit that can't afford those repairs right now.
Okay. Do you think with this program, the way it sets, that you will eventually catch up and then have the extra funding for? Or do you think they're coming on constantly and you're never going to have everything good?
Catch-up is a term that I stopped using about 15 years ago. So, I don't believe so, that we just, you know, with the transitions in homeownership and transitions in, in locations of, like, we have areas that are what we call our hot areas, where we hit a lot. Then all of a sudden, that area becomes quiet. We don't get many code violation complaints. Or our staff, when they're out in the field, aren't finding them through windshield observation. Then it can shift to another area. So, I don't think we will ever get caught up. I will say, though, it would reduce the number of outstanding open cases we have that we're, where we're basically resorting to fines and needing to certify those over onto the property owner. Because then we're putting somebody that's already in a difficult financial situation in an even greater one. Because when their tax duplicate comes, that is when those certified fees are due and payable.
So, let's say we followed the Yellow Brick Road into Never Never Land. And you did get the cases taken up from the people that are eligible. What would you do with them?
Well, then we would be coming back to you to say that the program was a success. And then we could look at transitioning it. I still do think that there may be room to allow some of what you have. But we really need to kind of run this through and see how much. And you have to remember, certain, certain property maintenance violations can differ. We can have a broken patio stairs, for example, that are more costly because you're replacing, basically you have to remove the broken concrete stairs. Yes, you could replace them with wood, but that's more costly. Someone that literally just needs to hire a laborer for $200 or $300 to rehang gutter or to make sure their downspout is connecting to the storm drain is only going to run a little bit. So, the level of assistance will vary based on the scope of the exterior property maintenance violations.
So, this is not going to get into a situation where I'm never going to cut my grass because the city's going to come by and pay somebody to cut it for me?
No. This will be literally exterior, physical property maintenance violations on the structure itself. It will not be some, and it wouldn't even be for ancillary activities such as a section of fencing fell down. Somebody can help you put that back up.
All right, thank you.
Heidi?
Oh, I don't think, I think I know the answer to this, but is there a limited funding cycle or is it year-round?
Well, with the NGP, we ran it year-round because we never actually used all of the funds. So, we anticipate this will work the same. We do obviously identify more property code violations when people are out and they start. walking the neighborhood and they realize, oh, there's peeling paint there. But we anticipate that this resource would be available throughout the year. If it were to become a situation where, then we would put a timeline, but we're going to be driving the process through conversations internally with staff. So Eric and Paul, like I said, will be our gatekeepers. They'll be like, you know, we've already reached, and they do a great job of trying to come up with a work plan. We try not to be heavy-handed with our code enforcement. We really find that working consistently and repetitively gets us where we need to go. But there are situations, even with that consistency and trying to be collaborative, they literally just don't have the financial means.
Right. So this is, this is good for community relations?
Definitely. To offer them an opportunity to address a code violation that they are unable to financially afford would definitely be, I think, a great situation.
Roger.
She already answered my question, so I'm good.
Tracy?
I like the idea of it being a pilot project and seeing it in a year and seeing what's done. What happens if somebody has so many code violations, though, that they go past the $1,000 cap? I mean, are we willing to, you know, seed them some more, like, maybe it's $1,700 or $2,500? So is it flexible, or is it $1,000 and that's it?
Well, we did $1,000 as a benchmark, but we would ask that the staff be able to make those judgment calls based on the nature of, many times, code or property maintenance violations can be, like, in a group. For example, we have their gutters are down, which then has resulted in water in this situation. So we would ask for a little latitude to increase or exceed that $1,000 on a case-by-case basis as we see necessary. We would not, however, spend the entire amount to replace someone's roof because they need it. This is for smaller repairs that, most of our repairs actually are things that can be targeted within a range of $500 to $1,000. There are a few that are, you know, if you have to tuck point a significant chimney, we have a lot of crumbling chimneys out there that is actually something that brings a lot of complaints, because it brings a lot of rodents. So tuck pointing in some situations, depending on how bad it is, can run just a few hundred dollars, but it can, in some situations, go exceed $1,000.
Any more questions from council? Questions from the audience? No? Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with this program. And, you know, I'll just say that.
Second.
A discussion, please?
Yeah. I have a few things. I want to commend community development for coming up with this. I love the Neighborhood Grant Program, but it was very difficult to get people to actually do anything with it. So I agree. I think this benefits the whole neighborhood. Looking at the map, you could see there are many, these homes right now are distributed across the city. But I know of some people in my own ward, besides the ones that are here, that may benefit after getting a code violation. It made me feel much better to call the code enforcement officer as well, because I do realize that people don't always have the income. The point really is to get the project done. And it's not to build up violations, it's to be able to work with people and do it. So I am very excited about this program, and, you know, I'd like to see it really be fully utilized.
Tracy?
Yeah, I'm really thrilled about it, too. I'm really excited about it, too. A good job on your part. And I think it goes hand-in-hand with the exterior maintenance code that we have, and I think it's really going to help bring up neighborhoods, which is fantastic. Because that's one of the things we're really trying to do, is to stabilize the neighborhoods.
Yep.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great to sidewalk, Mr. Sidoti.
Yes, we have a consideration of an AT&amp;T water tower lease amendment. I guess that's what it is. Who's up?
Melanie pointed to Hope, so Hope's going to take it. But the two of them have been working on this for some time, and I have to say, if nothing else, the AT&amp;T sales guy sure is persistent. We get emails from this guy all the time. Have you approved this yet? Have you approved this yet? So he'll be delighted to know that we're at least talking about it tonight.
And this actually, the conversation with the AT&amp;T lease actually goes hand-in-hand with the next item, which is the KSU easement. The city has an easement with Kent State or the state of Ohio to, for our water tower. AT&amp;T has been hanging their antennas and equipment from our water tower since 1989. Their lease was up last year, and at that point, we started negotiating with them to re-up this lease. We, currently, they are paying $2,750 a month, and the new agreement will call for a monthly rent of $3,103.20 a month, and with 20% of that going to the state. And that's, that's how much, that's what our former agreements with the state has been. Because there is, because the use of the easement now is more burdened, they want their share of what we get from AT&amp;T. The term of both lease and the easement with the state is five years, and each of those have three-year, or three, five-year re-up. And, and all of those call for, each re-up of the lease would get us 10% more. Each re-up of the easement with the state, we'd have to pay 10% more of that 20% to them. So that's in a nutshell, if you have any questions.
Do we have any questions from council? John?
What was that total figure again?
Right now, total for monthly?
Proposed.
The proposed is $3,103.20 a month.
$2,000 or $3,000?
$3,000.
Three? Okay. So we're getting about $36,000 from one of the carriers for a tower on our building. So that's right there.
Yeah.
Tracy?
I take it the re-up payments are based on the inflation rate?
That, well, that's what we asked for. Actually, I think it's probably more than the inflation rate. They had, they had actually proposed, I believe, 10%? Or, I'm sorry, 5%?
I was going to say, we started out at three, then we asked for a lot more.
It's every five years, right? So it's 10% every five years?
Yes.
So that's 2% a year.
Yeah.
So it's about inflation.
Yeah, it is. And actually, I think that probably, I've heard, I've heard that AT&amp;T is going to focus on the Canton-Acron area, or, sorry, the Cleveland-Acron area for their 5G. So I'm wondering how soon it will be before these towers might become more obsolete, if they're going to start coming in. Which, that will segue in. I will be back to you with the small cell amendment as well.
Other questions from council? Anyone from the audience wish to speak to this? Back to council.
Move to approve?
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Now we have the consideration of the KSU city easement for water tower lease. Right? Goes hand-in-hand.
Correct. It does.
Mike?
We have an easement with Kent State. We have to pay that yearly?
We-
Usually, when we do an easement, don't we just buy an easement?
We do not. It's my understanding, and you can correct me, I do not believe we pay for that easement for our tower. But in our agreement, it basically said, if you allow more of a burden on that easement, like with, with AT&amp;T or other, then if you get money from that lease, we want money as well. Pretty smart.
Sharing.
Sharing, yeah.
Is it the same 20, is it what the, the 20% from the previous thing we just talked about, is that covering it?
Yes, yes. Yep. And what they'll do is, AT&amp;T will send 80% to us and 20% to KSU or the state.
That's all I need.
Yeah.
Other questions from council? Back to the audience? Seeing no questions, back to council.
Move to approve? Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Now we have the city KSU amended bike-share agreement.
Yeah, you know, the bike-share program is evolving, and we're sort of mirroring what's happening around the country. You know, the, Kent State has gone through a bidding process to look at dockless bikes, because if you recall, now the current system has certain designated docks, big bike racks, where the bikes that are available for rent are supposed to be kept. And not surprisingly, when you think about it, that's a little less, less convenient than if you were able to take the bike to the restaurant directly and lock it or put it right outside there, as opposed to parking it at the dock and then walking a block to the, to the store, or whatever you're going to. So you're seeing a lot of dockless programs emerge, and Kent State wants to take part in that. You may also, it's not in this bid, but I'll share it anyways, e-scooters are really popular and gaining popularity. And we do, we think there is a role for them, much like the dockless bikes. It's another way to get people around town and not, you know, overburden our streets and the parking issues and all those things. But too much of a good thing can be a bad thing, too. And that's, bigger cities have had a little bit of problems with the proliferation of the e-scooters, because they're really popular. And I've seen a couple kids, students, using them here. I'm assuming they're, they're owned, they're not rented. Right now, there's no rental. Kent State did include that in the bid, but they decided, let's kind of wait and see, let's roll out our, our bike program dockless, and let's hold off on the, on the scooters for now. But Jim has been very much involved in this. And I guess with that, I'll let you carry it forward.
As usual, Dave is very thorough. Just a couple things to add, the details that wouldn't be in the memo. The bike fleet that they're looking at would include 100 pedal bikes, 68 electric assist bikes. It would include two 88 compliant bikes and 10 fat tire bikes to be used in wintertime and off-road. Another big change is that last bike-share program, the university and the city subsidized the regular operations of it. This program does not need to be subsidized for the regular operation of it. Part of that, I think, is because of the dockless, and they're, they're expecting for each bike to be used four times a day by different users. There is, in the MOU, a commitment for up to $5,000, which is in our budget, to be able to do ancillary services. Like, if there's concerns with where bikes are getting parked, we can mark areas in, that are acceptable, and sign areas, and that would be available to do that. So there's a lot more information that's about the program, but that's pretty much the basic gist of the changes. It's, would be available not only to Kent State students, faculty, but to city residents and others, so.
John?
So by being dockless, that just doesn't mean they can drop them wherever they want to, so they have designated locations?
Okay. So how parking would work? So currently, there is already parking of bicycles in our ordinances. Okay? It's Section 373.09. That already exists. It pretty much already says, if they're going to park the bikes on the sidewalk, it cannot be done in such a manner that it interferes with pedestrian traffic or roadway issues. So that regulation already exists. But the MOU and the agreement with the company's VRIDE allows for a geo-fencing system. So basically, we can designate areas where biking, parking would be best suited. So I don't think anyone's going to get this right the first time, and it's going to take some time to adjust that system. The system will function better and be more usable if you have more available areas, you know. But if it gets too crowded in some areas, or it's not a good place to park bikes, you can put a fence around it in the app. And then if we want to be really obvious with it, when I went to visit Oxford, they had striped-off areas, and this is where places should be parked. So we will have the ability to work with Kent State and then the company to help encourage that. This company also had a program they called Lucky Bike in it. So what they basically did, if someone parked outside of where they were supposed to, they basically got the bike rental for free, so that they could put it back into, in areas where they want it. Also, this company has a staffing program of up to four employees in the, in Kent, and one of their daily operations would be to go around and monitor where the bikes are parked, to make sure they're not in the proper area. In the interview process and talking to them, they had all the boxes checked, it seemed like, to sort of make sure this isn't a problem like it's been in other areas. Have to wait to be seen, though.
So my second question is, you partially answered it. So they have a monitor, so how, so they're dispatched electronically or by phone, or how does somebody know where the bikes are to give them to somebody?
On their app.
It's all on the app?
It's all on the app, yes.
So when they drop a bike off, they do something like a Uber to the app, or?
The bikes actually have a self-locking mechanism, and when they lock, then that would be, say, the bike's available.
Okay. And then that sends a signal back and?
Mm-hmm.
Mike, you had your hand up first.
So designated parking areas, would that be like your, because they'll go around and pick these bikes up, the ones that need charged? Are they going to have, they're going to have bikes that need charged for you?
The easiest bikes, they would, yes.
So they'll go around and pick those up and charge them or charge them?
Correct.
Is the docking?
You have to see the bikes. It was easier for me, since I've seen them.
I've seen them, I've seen them before in Columbus.
The docking ones and the self, and the dockless ones?
And the scooters. The scooters hanging in the trees and, you know, because that's, you could put them anywhere. But, you know, I was just curious if they're going to be able to, like, put them, like, in our bike racks downtown?
Yes.
Would that be an acceptable place?
Yes.
There's plenty of those.
That's correct. Right. And, and at least that's our intent. You know, from all the discussions we've had, and the biking brainstorm we had with the biking public, they want to be able to take their bike to the location that they're going. That's why they're riding, versus parking a couple blocks away.
And then they can leave that.
And they can leave it there, and someone can pick it up, or they, they can rent it again.
It's sort of like that scooter program.
It's, it is, it is.
That's crazy, though.
Tracy, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to say that the gated-in places, those are specifically for these bikes.
The geo-fencing, you mean?
Right. The geo-fencing is specifically for the geo-bikes. And if I just rode my bike down, I could just still park it wherever I wanted to park it like that.
Correct.
And I'm, this is just curious, you know, it doesn't have anything to do with our ordinance or anything. But if somebody takes one of those bikes to the restaurant, and then they go and they eat, and they want to have the bike when they come out to go home, how would they do, I mean, is that, they just have to leave it up to chance that it'll still be there, or?
Or, or they can not lock the bike and pay for the additional time that they're renting it.
Okay.
So.
John?
So if I rent a bike, and I want to go to Connors Woods, I could go there, then decide I want to walk home?
Good, if you want to.
And then someone has to go to Connors Woods and pick the bike up?
Yeah, and you'd probably get charged a fee, because that would probably be outside of the area that they would serve.
What's all on your phone, just like we were no particular?
I just want to add, it may not be evident necessarily, but we, we like the way we're, we're kind of heading into this project, because, you know, we did some, a fair amount of conversations with Athens, Ohio. And their, their approach is a little different. They didn't partner with the university for a single contractor. They let the market handle that. So that means they have four or five different companies, and the city instead tries to create regulations to control those four or five different companies. In our case, we're partnering with Kent State, and it's essentially, it's an open bidding process, so everybody has a chance to bid. But in awarding the preferred sort of exclusive contract for the Kent State service, nobody, the market's not big enough to have three or four other companies. So the issues where you have a whole bunch of bikes is not among four different companies, it's with a contractor that's being paid by Kent State. And so we think that allows a little bit more control when their contractor works for you. So with some of these problems, I'm not saying they're going to be problem-free, I'm sure there are going to be problems, issues, I will say. There will be the kind of issues that Mike's describing. But I actually very much like this, the partnership. I mean, it really is a partnership with Kent State in this case, that I think will make our program more successful and less, I think Bridgette used the word, in enforcement, we really don't like heavy-handedness. And we don't want to do that with the bikes either. really don't like heavy-handedness and we don't want to do that with the bikes either. This way, we, we partner with the contractor, we partner with Kent State and we work through the problems together. I think it's a, it may not be obvious that that's a difference, but that is a difference and from, you know, Columbus and of course, big cities are a whole nother ballgame, but Athens and Miami and, so I'm, I'm pleased and fingers crossed, I think it should pay dividends for us.
Yeah, I would add too, if, if they're not successful in making us happy and meeting the market, Kent State doesn't renew their contract after a year and all the investment that they've spent, they have to leave campus and there's not nearly that kind of a market just in the city. So, it's going to be, it's going to encourage them to, to make it work. So, which is best.
Mr. Amer? How successful is the current bicycle rent? I, I, I see bicycles being driven around the campus. Is that successful?
The program that was here before with NextBike?
Right.
It was successful, but it had some issues that could be improved upon. So, NextBike was one of the, the companies that submitted for this round, but they weren't successful. Some of the things that NextBike was unsuccessful with is, A, was the cost, right? It was being subsidized. B, their equipment had to be sort of maintained. They said they're going to do it, but it really ended up on Kent State's Department of Rec Services. And frankly, the bikes that they should, these new bikes are much better quality than the last ones. The biggest thing to me was the new bikes come in with airless tires. They're solid rubber tires. All the, the cables are interior to the frame, so there's much less problems in, in using them. And I think since they're supposed to maintain them, then they're going to, they're providing a better product, so.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Back to council.
Move to authorize?
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. Then we, Jim, you're still up here, huh? And I like this one, being a West Sider.
The simple way, the simple way to put it is we're requesting partisan council's approval of participatory legislation from ODOT, with ODOT to resurface there on 59 from the city limit stow to actually the Haymaker Bridge over the Cuyahoga River. I should say, this is the second or third time I've here for this legislation for this street. It's been changed several times as funding restrictions at the state have forced them to push it back. But, simply put, it's an 80/20 split for the resurfacing with, with ODOT paying 80%. The road's in such bad shape, we need to do pavement repairs on it. Between ODOT's help with AMATS, we got an extra 150,000 of AMATS funding to do the repairs and then we'll leverage our money for that. The money's currently in the capital plan for next year, so we're just seeking approval. And they did move the paving up to early in 2020 versus late 2020 where they had it before, so.
Tracy?
Just when was the last time it got repaved? I don't remember.
Prior to me coming here. I came in 2007 and so, I believe it was 2005 or 2006.
Yep.
That sounds right.
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Is this a word game or something? It says from South Manaway Street to West Side, we're not going to River Street?
No, that's not a word game. What happened was the person at ODOT, it's just, it's a little bit confusing. Long and short, they made a mistake. They sent the legislation to South, to South Manaway, but we called them up and they said, oh, that was a mistake.
So, it's River Street?
Correct.
All right.
They're taking it all the way to the bridge where the pavement changes.
I just wanted to make sure.
It's a great question. It rose, all those questions.
Long and old citizen of the Kent, I understand which is River, which is Manaway.
Yes, exactly.
All right.
Other questions? John, is our legislation, if we approve it this evening, going to say River Street or South Manaway?
We'll send it back to them with South Manaway. So, I did talk to him, he says, don't, I'm sorry, with River Street, thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I just put the bridge. So, we'll, we'll send that back as a comment.
So, that's what we're voting on?
Yes.
Other questions from council? Anyone from the audience? Back to council? Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Chairman, you can vote.
That's like...
Is there any discussion?
I would call the Land Use Committee and the item on the agenda, the proposed updates to the 2008 sewer service district.
Yeah, I don't think we've come to you in a while, at least not in my recent memory with, with the Nefco Water Service, Water and Sewer Service District Plan, that's a mouthful. I do know is a topic that Gene and I would talk a fair amount, because a lot of this has to do with where does county service begin and where does city service begin and so to speak, and any modifications thereof kind of get captured in this regional plan, this regional document. And, and I know at different times, we've actually had conversations, I know John brings it up sometimes in terms of, well, is the city sewer going to, can we run that out Mogadore and can we do X or Y with it to support obviously economic development opportunities in Brimfield? And oftentimes, the answer is we would love to do that, but it may not be in our service district. So, this is where that map is sort of located and Melanie's been working on, actually with Gene, I believe, kind of clarifying, I believe, just the sewer, some of the sewer aspects, not water here tonight. So, I'll let, go ahead and update council on what that's all about.
No. Again, you've kind of said it all, but the last update was actually done in 2011, so that's how long it's been. One thing I love about Gene is he kept great records and great notes. So, it was kind of fun to go up against him with his notes and to remind him what he thought was really good for Kent and now he's on that other side. So, we had some great meetings, some great conversation. We have some great staff here as well because Corey Finney was also in all of those meetings and Tia Rutledge from the county was there. So, those two really kind of worked on this together and then Gene and I would come in to maybe do some fine feathering, I would call on those lines. The majority of what we did was we, when the plan was initially done back in 1978, I believe, they kind of just took a pen and drew through a lot of property lines. So, a majority of what we really did was took a look at the plan and looked at where it was dissecting a property that might be, make it difficult then, who's going to take it, what's going to happen. We have that in Horning Road as you saw. So, we went through and we looked at those and we really tried to make some good engineering decisions as to who was better off to take that based on where those lines were. For the most part, most of it stayed within the city. There were a couple areas on Horning where there was sanitaries who were already from the county there, so it made more sense engineering-wise for them to get into it there. After that, then we took a look at areas that were already being serviced. So, there were areas within the city that were being serviced by Portage County and there were areas outside of the city being served by us within Portage County. So, we realigned those to make those make sense. In addition to that, I found some interesting history where on the west side of town, on Diedrich, we actually serviced some properties that are located in Summit County as well as up off of Newcomer Road.